All right, good evening. It's 5:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The first item or the first thing we'll begin with is the Citizens General Discussion. This would be if you want to speak about something that is not on our agenda. Just have some general item. Does anybody here wish to speak on something general, not pertaining to a specific item on the agenda? All right, I'll close the Citizens General Discussion. The first item up is the approval of minutes for June 18, 2025. Commissioners? Sir. I heard Vaughn first. All, sorry, sorry. Good try. All those in favor of approving the minutes for June 18, 2025, say aye. All right, next item, application number PD-8927. Applicant Ryan Hill, representing Quattro Soto Properties LLC, is requesting a rezon of property located at 640 North McCart, parcel 33266, being S-5700 Shepherd and Collins Block 11, Lot 4, to the city of Stevieville, Eros County, Texas, from R3 multifamily to PD plant development. The applicant will present the development plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually two separate parcels, so the PD will act on two cases, which is 8927 and 8928. Basically, these two sister properties were the same development, so just wanted to make that point before I begin. You might recall on June 18, Mr. Hill and Mr. Barnes came with a conceptual plan to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a 1.267 acre development. This is for a townhome development that will be individually plotted and sold separately to private homeowners. And they have came tonight to share their development plan with us. In the staff report on the, shortly after my opening comments there, I put together, from their narrative, the deviations that they're requesting from the base zoning of the city. The second line I have reversed, so there's an error there, but let's just run through those real quickly. Typically, we will limit this type of development to 14 units per acre. They are asking for 15.8 units per acre for this particular PD. Landscaping is generally a, an approved list of trees, and they're requesting that the plantings be determined by owner, but they have agreed to work within the, the list of approved trees specified in the landscape ordinance. We require two spaces per unit. They are providing one garage and one drive, so they meet the parking requirements, but it is going to be a little different than what you would normally envision. They're asking for 21 to 26-foot lot frontages, where we normally require a 30-foot lot frontage for a townhome. The square foot living space, we limit, or we have at a minimum of 800 square feet. They're offering 2,000 square foot per living space minimum. Their setbacks deviate substantially with the front from a 15-foot requirement to a two-foot requirement. I want to point out that is because the garage will protrude off of the main structure and encroach the normal setback, so they can have that garage parking. The rear setback, they're asking for a five-foot reduction, and generally, in this area, there's a 20-foot landscape buffer when you have a housing development next to, say, a multifamily next to a single family. This entire area is somewhat single or multifamily in zoning nature, so it'd be my, my argument that perhaps that landscape buffer doesn't really apply any longer, but they are still going to provide a 10-foot landscape buffer with a privacy fence. And I want to stress that they're providing a privacy fence to help offset the 10-foot delta in the requirement. Their roof deck will be at 35 feet, with architectural elements not to exceed eight foot. We have a new code interpretation where I believe that will fall within the building height requirements as certain features that are not structural in nature are not really within or included in that height limitation. They are asking for a 20-foot fire lane. We normally require 24 to 26. We've been in discussion with the fire department. They are doing full sprinkler systems on this development. Fire Department is willing to work with them on the 20-foot fire lane, and we just had a conversation, I believe, yesterday regarding this requirement. And developers are fully in agreement with the fire department on how to move forward with that. 15% of the site must be open space by our standard, which would be 19% of the total 1.2, calculates that to 0.19 acres is what that should say. They are providing open space on 0.27 acres of the development. They're asking for a waiver of the parkland dedication fees, and they're asking that the landscape be determined, the location of landscaping be determined by the owner, where we say that 30% normally has to be in the front of the development. This is along McCart Street. You might be familiar with that area. We've had some other developments there. This is going to go on two parcels that have dilapidated homes that they will be demolishing, so it's my opinion that the location of landscaping is not all that paramount, as long as we see some improvement to the, to the parcels with the structures. So, future land use under our 2050 plan is community core. Community core land use accommodates a mix of uses of medium density, which is what we're speaking about here tonight, at 14 units. They are asking 15.8, not a huge deviation. And again, we have gone through the process of conceptual plan. Your recommendation tonight will be sent forward to the City Council for a final decision. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd be glad to make any, or answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Steve?
I do have a, a question. It's more of a general question about parking. I live very near the townhomes, just across the railroad tracks, the Purple Rail. And what triggers the signs from the city of parking on One Southern Street only?
That's actually something that is determined by the Chief of Police, based on just traffic loads. And so, after that development came in, I believe we wanted to, to work with the, you know, the existing residents to make sure that they were not being overwhelmed by. Thing is, with that development, they have adequate parking. The students were just choosing to park on the street. And so, it's not that we're short of parking. It's just personal preference of where they were parking. And so, that's, that became a subject in some of the meetings here at the city, and the police chief assessed that and asked Parks, or Public Works Department to put the streets, to limit that parking, just to make them use the on-property parking and not the off-site parking.
Other questions for Steve?
Well, I just want to allow the city to say that they have to use the garage for the sake of parking. If they, sort of fill the garage up with a bunch of stuff, and they try to park the vehicle elsewhere, would parking in front of the garage not be a parking spot?
The way, the way it's.
You just said the one, the open bay.
So, this development also offers 20 additional parking spaces for guests? Or, I suppose if people did want to park in the garage, they'd have that parking available. But, again, if we see too much moving onto the street, then we have the authority, or the police chief has the authority, to accommodate or make, make some adjustments on that based on the used parking patterns that he's seen.
So, the sidewalk, there's no sidewalks within, but there's sidewalks along McCart, correct?
Correct.
And then, the waiving of the park dedication fee, I assume because they're, they're giving this extra land in the center?
Well, that's a request that they're bringing forward. It hasn't been agreed upon yet. This is their PD request, so if the commission wants to, you know, recommend that it move forward with the exception to the deviation from the parkland dedication fee, that's certainly something that you could make in your recommendation. That has not been agreed to by staff. It's just been requested and presented for consideration.
If we approve this, does that automatically happen or not?
That, again, your recommendation will leave here, go to City Council, and then they make the final determination on that. We do have a site plan in here, and I think for the audience, if we want to pull that up. Jeff, I don't, I'm trying to get the page number on it, but if you could pull up just their site plans, I would appreciate that. Should be the very next document.
The, the detention area, where will that drain off to?
I'm going to defer that question to the developer. I know they've been working with Public Works. We don't have a full civil approval set that has been reviewed by staff yet, but I know that they've been working in conjunction with the Public Works team. And so, that will come later in the, the process if we determine to move forward with the planned development and rezon change, or rezon request.
Any other questions for Steve? All right, the, the developer's here tonight. Sir, would you come up to the podium and state your name and address? And go ahead and speak to us about this part.
You bet. Ryan Hill, 190 Forest Court, Alito, Texas. Yeah, to, to answer your, your question, Commissioner, the drainage will go through a flume similar to what we did on 2290 Tarleton, and then it'll discharge into the, the gutter of McCart Street. And it'll be detained to pre-existing flow, so it won't be an increase in runoff. And thanks again for, for the time. Sorry, I kind of jumped into, but, um, per the last conversation that we had, we did decide to add the garages. Obviously, that's a big change that we, we did. Another thing was, was working with the fire department on reducing that fire line so we could get a bigger courtyard. And we wanted more courtyard for, for the detention and also for the, the comment space for the community. We wanted to add two, two pavilions, couple grills and hangout areas there, so that, that was the reason for the request for the parkland dedication fee waiver. The, the question with the parking off-street, I, we, we hope that's not an issue. We're, we're planning on doing a gated community here, so that would make it kind of not convenient to walk through the gate if you park off-street or off, off-property. Also, there was, there was concern at the last meeting with one of the, the adjacent homeowners about site visibility, being on these rooftop terraces and seeing properties around, around the perimeter. We worked with the architect. I, I don't know if y'all have seen the architectural renderings, but we did work with the architect to create a visible barrier along the rooftop, so you can't see the perimeter. It kind of focused the attention to that courtyard. So, we hope that was a good faith change to, to help alleviate that, that concern. Yeah, if y'all have any other questions, we're happy to answer what you might have.
Commissioner, do you have any questions for the developer?
Madam Chair, if I could ask, we pull up that Stevieville Townhome rendering, and also in your packet is a development schedule, which is a component that's required for this, this PD, which is included in your packet. But Jeff, if you could get to that document titled Stevieville Townhomes, there we go. That's the rendering that Mr. Hill is referencing.
All right, thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, well, go ahead and open a public hearing. I know that I received, oh no, this was Mr. Hill. So, that's that. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor or against this rezon request? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, if we need a motion, and then we can discuss.
Our motion to recommend the council to approve PD-8927 and 8928.
Second.
Okay, I think we can only move on, on the.
Well, I said that because of the way it's.
Yeah. But we, we can't move on them together, can we?
We can certainly act on each one separately. I think, you know, in this case, with it being a PD, if, if we don't approve both, then the PD's going to not move forward regardless. So, it's basically the same development plan. I, I would feel comfortable acting on both at the same time if, if you would like to.
I'm doing that. Who was the second?
I was.
Okay. All right, commissioners, what do you think?
A lot of people in the smaller area.
Yep. It's a good point you made about the parking.
Everybody's saying the parking issue wants. Traffic going back through on Vanderbilt and Jonesville, it'll be pretty bad, especially during school hours.
Other thoughts? Is everybody comfortable with the park dedication or none because of the included park area?
Adjacent park there.
Yeah, Bill Duncan, to the side.
All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezon request, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, so that recommendation will go forward for 8927 and 8928. Thank you, sir. All right, next up. It is application number PD-8998. Applicant Malcolm Knute, representing Kiwedon Developments, is presenting a conceptual plan for a planned development of property located at Zero Cedar Street, parcel R-78345, being part something, Part 1 maybe, of the AO342 Hudson HC to the city of Stevieville, Eros County, Texas. Mr. Killip.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, so Mr. Knute, we have two of them here tonight, or three of them, I believe, Taylor.
Other Knutes.
And Taylor Knute and Malcolm Knute may be presenting information to the, the commission. This is for a planned development on the 49-acre tract that you guys are familiar with. Mr. Knute is asking for consideration for a planned development that will be a single-family home development on the portion of the property that is currently zoned R1, single-family. A portion of this property also is zoned B2, but should this move forward, he will actually have a plat that takes the R1 zoning away from the, the B2 zoning, and this development will be the PD for the, the single-family build. If we reference the 2050 future land use plan, it's designated as complete neighborhood. And so, on the following page, I include in an excerpt from the 2050 plan, "Complete neighborhood land use accommodates a mix of uses of moderate density. A mix of housing types is encouraged with some local retail and service businesses located on active corridors." His site plan does not necessarily bring in any type of retail, but it would be compliant with the 2050 land use plan, or the 2050 Stevieville comprehensive plan. In your packet, we have a, a map of the area, and then this has been a work in pro, process or progress. Mr. Knute wanted to make sure that he, I asked Mr. Knute why, why he wouldn't consider just an R2.5, R2.5 straight zoning. He indicated to me that he wanted to, to make sure that it was clear that he would only build single-family homes, and that he was willing to do that through a planned development request, so I appreciated that. He's familiar with the previous concerns from another time when we were looking at a development for this property. So, the, the, I included the paving map early on when I was writing the, the staff reports in preparation for tonight. But again, he's been working closely with his engineer. This is not 100% reflective of what we are talking about as far as his latest plan. So, Jeff, I'm looking at the 6079 preliminary plat, if you can pull that up, please. And I believe this is pretty close to the latest of what I understand Mr. Knute is wanting to do. So, you see here that it's roughly, I'm going on memory, I think it's 123 single-family lots?
131.
131, 131 single-family lots. And I believe what the latest thought process is, is where you see Street D. Scroll down just a little bit more, Jeff, please. Street D, I believe, is going to continue through lots 16 and 17, where he will have access up into the area that is currently zoned B2, and then access to Sixth Street for the development. So, I think we're just, one more, Jeff, if you could. It's, if you can click on the 6079 preliminary plat. One more. One more, please. There we go. Okay, so Street D, I believe, is going to push through those two lots and then eventually connect up to Sixth Street. Sixth Street is actually a 50-foot right-of-way. It was dedicated, I guess, many years ago. It's, it's on record in the King's Maps, which date back to 1956. And to our knowledge, it has never been abandoned, just not used as a city, city street. I believe that Mr. Knute developed this, you know, that we may have to look at the improvements of Sixth Street, obviously, to allow for any traffic that might come into this development. And then, as we continue on, we have some images that Mr. Knute provided, which is basically the monument, type of monument sign that he would like to provide for this development. And again, this is just a conceptual plan, and some of this is not necessarily required to be discussed tonight. Mr. Knute's wanting to provide as much information as he could, so I apologize for the multiple refreshes on the record today, but we kept having submittals come in, and then I noticed a couple of errors I needed to fix on my own report, so that's why we had some updates. But I just wanted to let you know that we, we were working up to the last minute, trying to make sure that we had as much information available for the conceptual plan tonight. Mr. Knute, Taylor, and Malcolm are here. And with that, Madam Chair, if I'd like to answer any questions that you and the commission may have, otherwise, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
Some of, not all the exits from the property are coming down Cedar Street now, because it's Sixth, Sixth Street now?
The Sixth Street will eventually, and I'm going to defer that to Malcolm Knute or Taylor Knute, because I underst, we've had discussions, and I asked if there were going to be any additional documents submitted today. I think that's still a work in progress with his engineer, but I believe that's the intent, is to extend that street up. But I prefer to defer, I would prefer to defer that to the Knutes. I will point out that the two access points on Cedar Street meet the fire department requirements as far as distance between, and we, we've had meetings with the review staff. And then, Mr. Knute will be dedicating right-of-way for Cedar Street and for the future Harbin Road extension on the north side of the development. With these access points into the development along Cedar Street, he will have to make improvements to Cedar Street for his development on at least 50% of the roadway.
Okay. Give, give us one second while we work through a couple more questions. There, there was a number of letters talking about the, the quality of the road, Cedar Street, and a blind corner. Is that something that's going to be addressed, or should we wait for Mr. Knute?
Well, condition of Cedar Street, I think, would be addressed through the developer's responsibilities for his portion of the development. So, 50% of that roadway would be his responsibility to improve. And then, if development occurred on the other side, on the south side, that development would be required to make the same improvements to 100% of the roadway.
Okay, other questions for Steve?
What about the, so the flood risk, is it going to, is it going to, I guess, like anybody downstream? Because all the water from basically the stadium comes down there to that potential one, so every, once it gets full, I mean, I'm not familiar with that pond factor. I'm not sure I'll have damage or anything like that, but with the runoff right there, is that going to affect anybody downstream?
Well, it will be reviewed by city staff. Well, it will be reviewed by city staff, public works department. And generally, a, a development of this magnitude is, we receive the cements from the developer's engineer. And then, they are outsourced to a third-party engineering firm. Third-party engineering firm gives us comments back, city staff reviews those, makes any additional comments that they feel is necessary. And we work with the, the project engineer until all three engineering, uh, review teams are in agreement with what is required to not have any type of negative impact on the downstream properties.
Okay, and my last question, just to reiterate, this is already zoned R one, correct? And we are putting in R one. So, we're only doing the plant development because, what, we have some variations on sizes of?
Lot sizes in R one, specific R one zoning, or seventy-five by one hundred, I believe these lots. Frontages are significantly less, I'm thinking anywhere from fifty to sixty feet on the frontages of the lots within.
So, lot size is smaller?
So, it's a, it's a lot size variation, which is prompting the, the PD request.
Okay. Other questions? Alright, Mr. Knute, I'm interested in your presentation for us. Or discussion, or, a, a question to answer, how about that?
Little bit, little bittable. Yes, just reiterate what Steve said, we've, we've actually been working on this, um, project and, for a couple of months now. We are a little bit further along than we normally would be at, at this point. The property, as you can see in that site plan that Steve has up there, and we had the, the preliminary plat we're working with right now, we went, I believe that plan has a hundred and twenty-three. We're at about a hundred and thirty-one right now. Part of the reason that changed a little bit, or actually, no, I'm sorry, that, that is the correct one. We've already had a few discussions with the city and, uh, public works and fire marshal about, um, proper, we had another cul-de-sac in there that we eliminated to avoid any issues there. We are going for planned development, not a straight zoning of our two point five here for both reasons Steve mentioned. We're pretty set on what we're, we're going to do with this parcel. We are limited, um, on the north, I guess that'd be northeast side, those high tension wires that go across. It does eat up a significant amount of green space that we can't do anything about. Same thing with about seven-ish acres of floodplain on the, um, western part of the property. So, we are limited on space. To make the development work, we do need to do fifty to, some lots will be larger than fifty foot wide, but we do have to, without doing townhomes, which we're not interested in doing here. We do have to seek that smaller lot size. But we are talking probably at a minimum thirteen hundred square foot, single-family detached homes and probably going no larger than two thousand square foot homes. The entire point of this development is to, what I believe is fill a big need in Stevenville, and that is affordable, single-family detached homes. Somewhere in the low to mid three hundred thousand range.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Knute?
Historically, since you've been here, when you sell your properties, do they usually revert back to rentals or are they going to first-time, owner, homeowners or how's that?
Well, it, it depends on the project. We do see that with our, we've built a couple, and are in the process of building a couple of townhome developments in town. It's anywhere from sometimes a, about an even split, fifty-fifty, owner occupied or, um, investors buying them as rentals. We have had at our Tar- the monument sign, the picture Steve included in there, we have a lot of parents buying for their children who are students at Tarleton. So, there's a good amount of that. The single-family detached homes we built in Stevenville, we built a number on Prairie Wind and Moonlight a couple of years ago. To my knowledge, all of those are owner occupied. I think the one that we built on Doublehorn was built as an investment, or bought as an investment property. But I would anticipate this subdivision being heavily owner occupied, not, not rental houses. Not to say some people might not do that, but, um, it's a little different than our townhome developments. Obviously, all detached homes, two-car garages on every home alleviates the tightness of the, you know, space for parking reasons and whatnot. And, um, obviously landscaping will be very consistent with what we've done in the past. All public areas and parkways fully landscaped and irrigated. We're, there's probably going to be an HOA or a property owners association here. Not really many common spaces, no amenities like pools or anything like that. But, um, very nicely landscaped entrances with monument signs. It is our intention along Cedar Street, all of those lots you see, obviously, do not front on Cedar Street. We are going to put some sort of a semi-permeable privacy slash barrier fencing to, uh, not fully, it's not going to be a blockade by any means. But create some sort of separation between the development and then the, the properties across Cedar Street there.
And if you do an HOA situation, would you try to discourage rentals in that situation? Besides for the college students?
Possibly. We're, we don't have any restrictions or anything drafted yet.
Right.
We're a little early for that, but again, it's, it's our intention to, to make this a owner occupied subdivision.
Any other questions for Mr. Knute? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Alright, so this is, um, it, it's, it's just the presentation of their planned development plan. So, normally, we are not required to do a public hearing because we are not actually voting on anything tonight. We are just getting information and giving feedback. But I know that there's a lot of people here and I'd like for the developers to hear what y'all have to say. So, I will go ahead and open a public hearing. Just keep in mind, the point of tonight is information, okay? So, so what, what you should be thinking about is what you could say to the developer, you know, what, what you would like, um, to see done, okay? Or, or, you know, what would make this more amenable to you. So, with that in mind, I'm going to open the public hearing. Got a number of people who've signed up. If you haven't and you'd like to speak, you'll need to get one of these forms and fill it out. First up, we have Nathan Collier. If you could come to the podium and, uh, give us your, um, name and address and you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you for your time. Thanks for what you do for the city. I know you do every month. Nathan Collier, female resident, I live at sixteen twenty Cedar Street. I provided you the, uh, images you have as far as the drainage and stuff. I am the property directly south of this, across Cedar Street. So, the water that drains through Pittman Lake, across Cedar Street, through this property on that western edge, comes directly to me. I'm, I'm, I'm the receiver of that, of that water. Uh, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Texas at Collier Consulting. We do water resource engineering and I, we work heavily. Our, our number one group of, of clients are development engineers. Not so much from the drainage perspective, we do that work, but groundwater, so we understand water, we understand developments. So, this is a very common, comfortable space for me professionally. Thank you for some of your considerations as far as the buffer along Cedar Street and all that, I do appreciate that. It needs to stay R one because of the lot size and because of the sensitivity of this lot, this area. And I've tried to address that here. It needs to stay R one for water reasons and for traffic reasons. And I think you're already kind of getting a sense of that, I don't think I'm saying anything too new there. If you look at those two images I provided you, um, you can't just look at this as a single lot. You have to understand, it sounds crazy, but two-thirds of the city drains across Cedar Street to my property. Most of it through Pittman Lake, but some of it further west, uh, West End Cemetery, you know, that big drainage that cuts through there, that kind of divides the cemetery? That goes up through that pecan orchard that Tarleton owns right there? That comes right through this property, across that low water crossing to my property. So, what you have to understand is when you do a drainage study, a drainage engineer looks at this property and says, what's the inflow? And you have to match the outflow, right? They are gonna do a prop, they are gonna do a drainage study for this image here up on the screen. They are not gonna do a regional study to understand what all Stevenville is, lack of a better term, dumping further south. There is a massive amount of water that you have to understand comes through this property. To drive that point home ten days ago, on Sunday when we got all that rain, I was standing at that low water crossing with Judge Huckabee, Chief of, or Captain Jeffrey Walker from the city of Stevenville Police Department and a, and a fire marshal. We were all standing at that little water crossing. They had a squad car there with its lights on, preventing people from crossing. Judge Huckabee and I are standing there and, um, one of the gentlemen is walking on that road and the asphalt is literally bubbling up. And he steps on it like a pillow. That much water comes across that road. I have videos on my phone, it is a significant amount of water. If you look at the bottom of that image, either one of those two, you see that little, you see my little, uh, lake that kind of looks like a little teardrop kind of thing down there? And then, to the left of that, to the west, is a small white barn. Gail Warren built, or actually Kenneth Howell here, built it for Gail Warren, a few, uh, previous city council member, um, built in twenty years ago, more?
Yeah, ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, flooded for the first time. Last year or two years ago, since I've owned, I've owned the property three years, flooded for the first time. What you gotta understand is the cumulative effect of everything from Chick-fil-A and Cavenders and even, um, out there to, uh, um, Captain D's, the new Stevenville football stadium? It's a cumulative effect that each individual drainage study doesn't account for.
You have three minutes left, if you could just wrap up your major points.
The water damage is real, you see this in the photos? The water damage and the cumulative effect of the water is real. A northern entrance to Sixth Street gives you a northern access, no matter what happens. I think it needs to stay R one. You can eliminate one of the things, one of the entrances on Cedar Street, giving it one Cedar Street entrance. One has to go to the north, one goes to the south. I think that helps a lot, I think that would give a lot of the residents here ease if there's only one Cedar Street entrance. That turns nasty, you have a picture of the accident that just happened. It is a very sensitive property, there's a lot of water that comes through there. This is a very high density, the, the, the planned development allows them to have very high-density homes. The R one allows for more breathing room. There's an image a couple pages up that looks a lot more suitable. That's my recommendation, thank you for your time, sorry I went over.
Thank you. Next up, we've got, uh, DeVice Howell, did I say that? Doris, Doris, I'm sorry, my apologies.
I have, I have pictures, but I'm not a photographer, so please do not hold me accountable for, Nora Collier, coffee's a terrible, but I did my best.
And please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Okay.
My name's Doris Howell, I live at sixteen ten West Cedar, along with my husband Kenneth. And we own the properties at fifteen sixty West Cedar and two properties on Kalock, fourteen eleven and thirteen sixty. Thank y'all for listening to us, I know we've been here before, we'll probably be here again. We are strongly, strongly opposed to this particular project. We welcome a true R one development. This is way too dense for, for, for what is already there. To keep in the integrity of what we have, it's a nice neighborhood, we would like for it to stay a nice neighborhood. It has to have northern access. Cedar Street, and if you'll refer to your pictures, this is a copy of that corner that just had the bad accident, number one. It's a blind corner, it's terribly narrow. This was really, I think, a county road that was paved. We own, the people on both sides of the road own up to fifty percent of that road. We don't know if it's an easement, if it's a right-of-way. We don't have anything that says what this is, it's just was a dirt road, then it got paved. On your next page, this is looking at where this property starts facing down towards Nathan's house and our house. The next page is where, right past there, this road floods between our house and the storage tower. And it goes into the, there's a vacant, the field on the, on the next page. It just floods over the road, I mean, water just runs over the road. This isn't even at the bridge, this is before you get to Nathan's house. The next pages are the blind corner, which is past this development, which probably doesn't pertain to this particular thing. This last page, and it's a terrible picture, I do apologize. But all that white is the water that flooded over the bridge that Nathan referred to. You could not get down that street. That, and we went there at, after we got out of church at eleven o'clock, water was running fine through the tin horns. One hour later, it looked like this. This is a dangerous, dangerous road when it floods. But there are two very busy arenas that are out past us and there are duly pickups with long trailers pulling horses up and down this, up and down this road all the time. To add any more traffic out onto this is just asking for a terrible, terrible situation. Kenneth and I have lived at this place for twenty-nine years. We love our home out there and we have seen nothing but the rain or the flooding increase over those years. Just like Nathan said, Kenneth built that barn, it had never flooded. And every year, it just gets worse and worse. And, um, we just really would appreciate your consideration that this stay a northern exit only, no exits onto Cedar. And to, a true R one subdivision. Thank you for your time.
Eric Cagle?
Hello, my name's Eric Cagle, I live on six two six Private Road fourteen twenty-four. Uh, my entrance is at the very tip corner of the southeast of that dot drawing. Uh, I have my property and then two neighbors of mine have easements to go down my property there. Uh, I would like to start by just saying, thank you Commissioners for listening to this and, uh, I appreciate all of the thought put into it. I think Stevenville needs, uh, more housing like this. I think it's a good development, maybe just in the wrong place. For one is the entrance and exit, you're gonna hear that over and over. Sixth, uh, Sixth Street entrance would be great. I feel like it's a shame that Harbin cannot be developed farther than where it is, cause it is just dead end. And that's a good wide street with a good intersection to let people come in and out. If, if that can't happen yet, maybe it's not the right time. Uh, another thing, the sharp curve where Lillian turns into Cedar Street, there are close calls there almost daily where people almost hit each other. Just this week, my power was out at my house because someone hit two poles there on the corner and I had twelve hours without power because they didn't make that corner. It's how sharp it is. Uh, the street's not wide enough for that kind of traffic. It, it doesn't have a center stripe. A lot of the people going up and down the street or right down the middle of the road, it, it's dangerous pulling in and out there. So, that, that needs to be a consideration. The flooding that Nathan talked about is definitely a problem. So, from Nathan's property, Mr. Collier, uh, it runs from his property across my property. I have a small lake there right in front of my house. Before I bought the property, it was a low water crossing. But fortunately, the previous owner put in a concrete bridge where the creek crosses. Well, just, uh, last weekend, on Sunday, there was six hours that no one could come into my property or leave my property because the bridge was underwater. That's how much water we get flowing down that creek. And it's a, it's a good, heavy bridge. So, uh, the water is definitely a concern for the runoff. Also, the, uh, the, I'm sorry, lost my place. The Sixth Street entrance, uh, I don't know if that's a good answer, but like I said, Harbin needs, needs to be utilized. The city has brought it to that point, it needs to, to continue out through the thoroughfare plan. So, again, I'm not opposed to the, uh, the development. It's just this concentration and this type of development, I think, would degrade our, our neighborhood that we've had. And I have been in first the Kalock Street for eleven years and then for the last thirteen have been there off Cedar Street. So, I have been in this same neighborhood for twenty-five, twenty-seven years in Stevenville, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Perry Hampton? Excuse me, Penny.
Penny, yeah.
Penny, I apologize.
Penny Hampton, fourteen eleven Harper's Mill Road. My parents live on Kalock Street, so I'm not gonna say how long I've been in that area because then I'm gonna age myself. But I grew up living in the Lockwood subdivision, grew up riding my bike down this road, never would've called, it was a country road. It is a country road. Last time when we talked to you guys, I think I emphasized, if you have never been on that road, go and drive it. And you will see, like she, she mentioned, the duly trucks and all those, you can- You can't pass. You can't have two cars meeting one another. If you do, one has to pull off almost into the grass area. It's very dangerous. People keep talking about the accident, and I don't know if you guys know about it, but it not only, it blocked out the electricity for everyone in that area for an extended period of time because of that blind corner. So entrance primarily being on Cedar Street is a real concern for me for safety. That's what I'm gonna emphasize 'cause these guys know way more than I do about flooding, so I'm not, it is flooding, but I'm just gonna tell what I know. There are a lot of kids that live in the Lockwood subdivision area. There's children that play outside. There's buses in the morning that access that Lillian Road that goes into Sixth Street. Now, I know that you don't want to have, primarily this is for homeowners and that kind of thing, but I think you brought up the point about renting because I think that's what happens a lot of times in Stevieville, especially with the growth of Tarleton, parents buying homes or other people for investments and Tarleton students living in there. With them going to school at the same time or whoever, the add, the adding so many more than what's, if you stay with the true R1 and not adding the additional lot sizes could add the restriction, but not having that Cedar Street entrance with school buses going up and down on Lillian every day, they're stopped, they're pulling up, there's kids playing in blind corner come around that, you don't know there's a kid playing right there on that corner. Um, and there, it is just, safety's the part that I would emphasize to you. I probably won't take up my whole time here. I just wanna implore you as a person who lives in the area, who first played in the area, that I know Stevieville's growing and I think we all want that. We all welcome the growth, but I don't think it needs to come at the expense of the safety of the residents, Stevieville residents, not people who are just looking to move in for a little while. Um, so I guess what I would say in summary is that I think staying as a true R1 with the restrictions on the sizing of the law, it's as important. And limiting that Cedar Street access, I would agree with what, um, Ms. Howell said where she said no entrance points on Cedar Street would be, um, preferred. And when he mentioned if they're not ready to extend Harbin, then maybe wait till that is ready to be extended before we add a whole bunch of people into an area that's just not built for that. Thank you, guys. I just wanna say, say thank you. You've had to listen to me before about this, so hopefully I changed it up a little bit. But, um, for me, safety's the main point, but thank you, guys, for listening to, to us and letting our voices be heard.
Thank you so much. Jill McAngus?
I, uh, I don't know if y'all are interested in seeing the picture of the wreck, but this, I'll show it to you. This is the picture of the wreck that happened yesterday that left a lot of us without electricity for twelve hours. So that's, I mean, that's a significant wreck. I, I bring it up because, um, so my husband and I have different, different expertises, right? So I'm a s-
You just put the record.
Jill, Jill McAngus, eight-ninety-one Private Road fourteen-twenty-four. So I live just down the road from Mr. Cagle. I couldn't get home for six hours because the road was flooded on Sunday. We went to church. It was fine. We came home, it was not. So there were six hours where we couldn't. My husband works for Collier Consulting. That's what he does is the water, um, what are studies drainage, the engineering part. He's an engineer for him. He's very concerned about the, the drainage. Um, my concern is more safety. So this is what I do. I'm an orthopedic surgeon, so I'm the one that sees these people after they have these wrecks. I have been in multiple different places where I practice, and I'm just gonna tell you the honest truth. You leave that Cedar right like that, you have this many people, and I, I mean, honestly, a lot of college kids are gonna end up in these houses. And you're gonna have more wrecks like this on the corner. Um, this happened at midnight. I have no idea if this driver was impaired or not, but that's gonna happen. Those college kids are gonna be impaired. They're gonna end up in a wreck on that corner. The biggest concern is the house that was right by those poles. There is a house that was right there, and he could have easily gone through that house. Um, so that you're putting other citizens, you know, there's safety risk, serious safety risk on Cedar Road, and that's my biggest concern. There are families that live there. I agree that this should stay in R1. Like, I'm okay with doing an R1, but you have these two entrances on Cedar, and we have no promise that there's gonna be a northern interest, entrance or exit. And that is my biggest concern. If, what happens, you know, if it's a flood and we only have Cedar Road exits, what's gonna happen with all of those people? You know, they have no way to get out that way. So, so if you cannot guarantee me that there is a northern exit, then I have a really big concern with this. I always equate this to me going into surgery and not knowing if I have instruments or if I have staff, but I have a case to do. Like, you wouldn't want a surgeon that did that, right? Like, you would want every piece to be strategically planned before it went into place for the safety of everybody around you. And that's all I'm asking, is for all of these things to be strategically planned out and proven that there is gonna be that entrance before we agree to, to let this happen.
Thank you, ma'am. If that's it for the forums I have, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Come on up. Thank you, sir.
Uh, so I'm Wayne Hancock. I don't live over here, though I'm the minister of the Cross Timbers Church of Christ, right there, right on the blind, right past the blind curb. Um, I also came to speak kind of as the representative of Homelessness Help, our local homeless coalition. Um, first I had to say, I think this is a massive improvement from where we were six months ago, or however long that was ago. Um, single-family homes, speaking as Homelessness Help, where he's desperately needed in Stevieville. Um, my concern with this development, as many have said, would be that these would indeed become rentals. And so what starts as single-family homes don't, um, don't actually serve that purpose. Um, and with that, my question for this development would be parking. Um, obviously, we have a pretty big parking lot. Um, though we want to welcome people, we don't want to be an overflow parking lot as a church there. Um, and so if these are single-family, then sure, there might be enough parking in these garages. If not, there's definitely not gonna be enough street parking if these end up being rentals with multiple college students is living in them. And so that would be our concern as the church. Um, this seems like a very packed number of houses in a small area. So single-family, I definitely think is the right move. It's what's needed in Stevieville. Um, this just may see, bridge that, or not bridge that gap old enough to actually be a single-family, but still leaning too much towards, uh, uh, rental aimed properties. Um, so that would be my, my one question. I know the Tarleton Crossing, uh, over there on Harbin, that, if I am understanding it right, so I'm gonna correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, it was developed and built with like four, with a all-on suite kind of design for rentals. Um, if this is being built that way, then I would question the intention of the single-family in development. Um, so those are just the questions I have that I would want to see answered.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor or against this rezon request? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will say that we also received, uh, two letters against and one letter, uh, stating they had no concerns. Okay, um, so closing the public hearing, commissioners, we need, oh, we don't need anything. We don't need a motion because we're not voting on anything. We're here to give feedback. So, uh, does anybody have anything that they would like to comment?
The key for this property is Harbin Drive. It's gonna have to be developed to eliminate everybody's stress about this property. Um, Cedar Street is not adequate, and even if they do, they're, they're part of the improvements. We've still got the city side going into the blind curve, and I don't know if we've got enough resources in the city to finish that out. But if, if Harbin Drive can be extended, uh, and tied into this, it might give a viable answer to this property. And I think an HLA situation might be another way to help deter this from becoming a, a college community, um, which would help with land values and, uh, hopefully the neighbors' concerns about all the traffic that'll come through here.
What are your thoughts?
I think it's quite a number of properties in a little space. I, I feel like there should be a northern entrance, and it should stay R1, is my opinion.
Bonnie, you got something?
Well, I don't know if I can direct a question to Steve or not.
Go, go ahead.
Um, what is the scope of the drainage studies? I mean, is it, is it far-reaching? Is it just isolated to this? Can you, can you speak a little bit about the scope involved with the drainage studies?
That's a little out of my wheelhouse, uh, but I can really tell you that, you know, when other projects have been developed in the city, Mr. Williams, our Public Works Director, um, he's pretty adamant about making sure that, you know, that there's no impact on the down, downstream properties. I one hundred percent appreciate, you know, what Mr. Collier is stating, it's a cumulative effect. Our city staff takes that into consideration, and our third-party engineering firm also takes that in consideration. What the, uh, I, I guess the layman summary I would have for that, and I've heard it stated in many meetings, this development is not intended to fix the existing conditions. It just cannot contribute to the conditions in a negative manner. So it's not, not this property owners or the developers' responsibility to try to fix the existing problem. It, it is their responsibility to prevent any additional problems because of development. And that's, that's really the simplest way I can explain. And that's what they look for when they do the extensive civil reviews that can sometimes take months to complete because there's a lot of calculations that go into this, and you have engineers that are, you know, they, every engineer wants to make sure that their, their, uh, their calculations are being recognized. So to get to that point of consensus can sometimes be a little labor-intensive, but it, it usually happens and, but again, that's, that's what we're looking for is, uh, does it, does it contribute to the problem? Then it, it won't be approved. If it does not contribute or impact, uh, doesn't add to the issue, uh, then it's, it's a, it's something that we move forward.
Other thoughts for the canutes?
I would be kinda concerned with where the flood waters will be this last time on the backside of the property. If you're gonna be having the housing unit, maybe figure out if you can put in some kind of a deterrent or maybe raise the, uh, structures at that spot.
Which part of the development are you referring to?
Uh, along, uh, Street B on the west side where the-
We have specifically stayed completely out of any flood zone whatsoever. We're not proposing to mitigate, change, manipulate flood zone. We're not touching the flood zone.
Right.
Okay, okay. Look, we, let's stop at the cross topic. Just give, yeah, feedback.
But on the feedback side, just making sure that the one-hundred-year line didn't get crossed. That way, if it, in future, uh, with the amount of progress of upstream, it doesn't damage your, uh, properties.
Okay, any, any other feedback? I have to say, I'm, I'm feeling, I understand the buying that the developers are in because, uh, trying to get in at a little, low price point to make this affordable. Uh, I, I know you need the smaller lot size. I, I understand that because that's what we're seeing a lot of developers do. Um, but I am concerned about the density of this project. I'm concerned about putting that many, and, and with the nature of Cedar Road, without a lot of improvements or a northern exit, I, I'm very, I'm concerned. I understand the, the, the problems from the developer end. I, but I'm, I'm, I'm feeling, um, not great about the density. That's where I, so.
But you have done a really good development for this city, and we appreciate it when you have done. I, I just feel that Cedar and Sixth might not be the best solution as far as things, but I think Harbin is gonna have to be a key for this to work out.
All right. They're said at least some capacity to the, it just work our current situation, um, things. Um, on that plan, the original intention was to extend Harbin and possibly explore a, a Sixth Street, uh, entrance. But like I said earlier, we've, we've had a number of conversations with the city. The issue as it currently stands with Sixth Street is based on how the South Loop is laid out right now with the current amount of stoplights. We're looking at a right-in, right-out there, and that's, eh, in our opinion, not feasible on a, eh, a development of this size or an R1 development to be able to access it with the right-of-way that currently exists on Sixth Street. Harbin Street would be ideal. We would like to do that. Our problem is we don't own the property or are not, uh, in a position to do anything with the property adjacent to this one, uh, which Harbin Street would have to go through to access this development. Um, we're certainly open to it. Uh, I think it would be a benefit to the development, but, um, as it stands right now, we're just not in a position to, to be able to extend it to, to that entrance there. So.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any other comments for the canutes? All right, well, we will, um, we'll, we'll leave it there. Um, thank you, everybody who came and spoke and gave your feedback. Thank you to the canutes for, um, giving us this presentation. So as this stands now, they will, um, come back to us once they have worked on this some more and present it as a full planned development. So you'll wanna kind of keep an eye on, um, on our agenda items in the coming months. And then, as you know, at that point, we would vote on and make a recommendation, then it would go to city council, and city council would make the final decision. But we appreciate everybody's time. We know that Stevieville needs development. We know that y'all wanna keep this a safe environment. I'm sure, I'm sure the canutes as well. So we, we appreciate it, and thank you for coming tonight. We're gonna move on to our next item. If y'all wanna clear out and go get dinner, you're welcome to. And thank you for coming. All right, the last item on our agenda, uh, Jabez, application number RZ nine-zero-one-two. Applicant CCS Stevieville Properties LLC is requesting the assignment of industrial zoning for the recently annexed property located at zero North US two-eighty-one, parcel R seven-six-six-eight-zero, being approximately seven-point-five-seven-seven acres of the A zero-eight-zero-four Williams MR survey of the City of Stevieville, Eroth County, Texas. With the assignment of zoning, the commission is requested to recommend extension of the ETJ and subsequent revisions of the Stevieville twenty-fifty comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, you might recall, June third, uh, this was before city council and was annexed through voluntary request by the property owners. This property, I'm sure you're familiar with, where the Atwoods, Tractor Supply, Rocky Creek, all of those, uh, there's this one triangular piece on the south side of that that's not within the city limits. You may have seen the Valero coming soon sign on this property. And so they have voluntarily requested annexation. This is important for us because we have some adjacent properties that are also looking at coming into the city. So this was very good timing on our part, uh, to have this request made. Council voted, uh, for the annexation, and I've included an excerpt from the ordinance, which basically says after it's annexed into the city, we must act within six months in assignment zoning. We are recommending that the commission consider industrial zoning, which would match all the properties to the north. Um, and so with that, Madam Chair, one thing I would like to point out before I, um, conclude is that in the, uh, opening description, I included with the assignment of zoning, the commission is requested to recommend the extension of the ETJ. That's, that's just standard practice, but also to update the twenty-fifty comprehensive plan. Twenty-fifty comprehensive plan calls this area, uh, to be complete neighborhood, which is not going to match for industrial zoning. That's never been the intent of the city, so that one slipped by us a little bit. So we will need to make a revision, uh, to that comprehensive plan. Um, and that's why I've asked you to make sure that that's in the, uh, motion that may go to council. With that, Madam Chair, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Steve? All right, well, I'll go ahead and open this to a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak for or against this rezon request? Looks like that's a no. Uh, commissioners, we need a motion, and keep in mind what, what needs to be included.
I would like to recommend the council approval of RZ ninety-twelve with ET, ET, ETJ extension. And any modifications to the comprehensive plan that need to be made.
Thank you.
Who's that, Nick? All right. Discussion?
I got one question. If lingualism ever be extended, uh, I guess to continue the loop, would, would it be, would it be a word, would it be, I guess, something to consider in the leaving like easement right there?
Uh, that's, that's a great recommendation and one that's actually been discussed, uh, to, with the city manager and text doc. So that's not off the table. We're just simply assigning the, a zoning tonight. So, uh, not necessarily looking at, you know, what the site plan is going to look like. We have annexed it, and it really depends on, uh, those adjacent properties and how they- And it really depends on, uh, those adjacent properties and how they develop. And I, I think, um, of course, the railroad is, is cuts through there. So we'd also have to have a railroad crossing. So there's some challenges in that, but it's a great concept. One that I think, uh, you know, has been explored by the city. Uh, but at this time, we're just in the, the assignment of zoning. Madam Chair, if I may, if you look at, um, item thirteen on the agenda, the motion should be the assignment of zoning or, or not rezoning. It's not, it's not zoned.
Got it.
It's currently not zoned. Just wanted to-
Okay.
-call that out, please.
Just need to amend?
I would like to amend my main motion to match the verbal, or the verbiage that needs to be stated here.
Second.
Okay, so we will act on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we'll act on the original motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh, motion to adjourn? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it.